Israel, after the unspeakable horror of this past weekend. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember John DeWorke, Councilmember Lyndon Fleming, Councilmember Ken Gibson, Councilmember Will Brisington, Councilmember Russell Stahl, Councilmember Dorothy Dow, here, Mayor Knox White.
Here. The minutes of September 25th will stand approved as the mentalists are any objections. Okay, thank you very much. We have two people who signed up this week, coupley. Ms. Michelle Shaw. Shaw, hi. How are you? We have a little clock up there, it's three minute rule, but good to have you here.
Absolutely. So, thank you to the council for allowing me this time. My name is Michelle Shaw. I live on the 500 block of Watts Avenue, which is parallel to Cleveland Street and runs between Jones Avenue and McDaniel Avenue. I'm here to request that the city reconsidered the decision to install no parking signs on the street. In August, the city installed nine no parking signs along this block, which is less than 700 feet long. This is approximately a 70% reduction in available on-street parking. I was told the street was evaluated for safety due to the complaints of one resident. This evaluation was performed during a many months-long, major renovation of a home. Those residents' vehicles, as well as their multiple contractors with trucks and trailers, have consumed much of the on-street parking as they have been unable to park on their own property. It does appear to be coming to a close. Watts Avenue is no different in width from many other streets within Alta Vista with no such restrictions. Watts has egress on each end. I ask that a fair and equitable process be implemented where the request for and results of these traffic studies are made publicly available. I believe restricting on-street parking on a residential street negatively impacts the resale value of our homes. I ask that Watts Avenue be returned to its original unrestricted state, and I thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you very much. We'll check that out. Is anyone on our staff familiar with the issue to discuss it with her afterwards? I don't know.
We've had an exchange. Shannon, can you weigh in on the, to summarize the history of how we got here?
Yes, Ms. Shaw is correct, and she has reached out and had conversation through email with Mr. Link, and we are happy to meet with her on-site and look at the issue through our city traffic engineering team. Our city traffic engineer is here this evening if you have any questions, but we're happy to come out and meet with you and walk Watts with you.
Do we also have fire here? Is Tristan here?
We do. Deputy Chief Homan is here, and I think we also had, we did have our fire department review that before, and that was part of that, but we can bring a cross-departmental team to the area and have a conversation.
Can you wait till the end, Ms. Shaw, of the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We'll get with you at the end to schedule a time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Farmer?
Aye. Mr. Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. I'm here tonight speaking about the book of zoning appeals and their attendance. It's come to me, come to my notice after reviewing some of these meetings that there's been a lot of absences. So I'd like to inform you of what's happened this year. They've had seven agenda workshops, seven scheduled meetings, and one joint meeting with the Planning Commission. That's through August, and this data is from the approved minutes as posted on the city website. On January 10th, Steph Wonder, the vice chair, this is gonna be important, was absent from the agenda workshop. January 12th, Mr. Wonder was absent from the meeting. On January 25th, Steph Wonder and Karish Patel are absent from the Board of Zoning Appeals and Commission Workshop. On February 7th, Mr. Patel was absent from the agenda workshop. On March 7th, Steph Wonder was absent from the agenda workshop. On March 9th, Mr. Patel was absent from the meeting. On April 11th, Mr. Wonder and Mr. Patel were absent from the agenda workshop. On May 9th, Mr. Wonder, Stephanie Gates, Ken Betch, and Mr. Patel were absent from the agenda workshop. On May 11th, Ken Betch was absent from the meeting. On June 6th, Chris Price, Steph Wonder, and Karish Patel were absent from the workshop. On June 8th, Steph Wonder was absent from the meeting. On August 8th, Steph Wonder and Karish Patel were absent from the workshop. On August 10th, Karish Patel was absent from the meeting. Therefore, of the 15 scheduled meetings of this board, Steph Wonder missed seven workshops, two meetings, total of nine of 15. Mr. Patel missed five workshops, three meetings, total eight of 15. These two gentlemen have missed over 50% of the scheduled meetings. They either are unable to perform the duties that you appointed them to. Based on the precedent that was established last year with Mr. Turner, I request that you remove these two members from this committee based on their lack of attendance to the scheduled meetings. Additionally, the meeting, the workshop meeting for tomorrow, for some reason, has been canceled, which is a little bit concerning in that the only item on the agenda for Thursday meeting is an exception request by a developer who is currently suing the city over a project on Rutherford Road. If the Board of Zoning Appeals were to approve this acceptance, would really put the city in, I think, a tight spot. Thank you.
Okay. And we are taking a look at the rules on people who are absent, because you're correct, that's a consistent record of absences. I think we agreed it does, didn't it? It's almost like not voting, you know, at all, which is what they do. That's a good point. I believe Mr. Wonder is coming off the board, though. Yes, yeah, okay. Doing this.
Mayor White, city council members. I'm Mike Jank. I'm the risk manager and ADA coordinator for the city. With me today is Laura Seisell. She's the executive director of Barbara Stone Foundation, and Chris Sparrow, Greenville Can, project manager. Two years ago, our team had a mission to support the city's, city council's mobility and transportation initiative. Our plan was develop a web app to be an informal informational resource to disabled individuals and their families so they could enjoy everything that downtown Greenville has to offer. Today, thanks to the assistance of the city's GIS staff Carmen Durham, Jeff McElroy, our communications staff Beth Brotherton, MJ Simpson, and Scott Bachman, and of course, the participating restaurants in this project. It is with great pride and excitement that we are announcing the release during our Fall for Greenville event, our new web app, which we are calling Access GVO. We now have a short video that we'd like to share with you, which actually Chris started in, that will give you some information about how this app will be used.
Hi, I'm Chris, and as you can see, I'm someone that uses a wheelchair. I'm the Barbara Stone Foundation's program manager for Greenville Can, our signature initiative, a coalition committed to making Greenville a better place for people with disabilities. I love coming downtown Greenville to eat, but let's be honest, it can be challenging for somebody with a physical disability. Whether it be slope terrain, stairs, or ongoing construction projects, finding where you need to go can sometimes be difficult. For people with disabilities, it's not just as easy as parking your car, jumping out, and running into the restaurant. There are other considerations that you may have to think of. We've been working with the city of Greenville to create Access GVO, an interactive map and accessibility guide for participating restaurants in downtown Greenville. Let's go for a tour. I'll show you how it works. With Access GVO on your phone, you can check out parking options and display routes from city-owned parking garages to Main Street, see accessibility reports for downtown restaurants, search for a specific restaurant, and read an accessibility assessment so you know what to expect when you arrive. For people with disabilities, although you may encounter some barriers, there are just as many lesser-known paths to be able to get you through to where you need to go. Access GVO will help you discover some of those paths. With Access GVO, we can make downtown Greenville a more inclusive and accessible place for all Greenville residents and visitors.
Wow. That's excellent.
Just a couple other points. In addition to the parking lots, all the street-level and accessible parking is also going to be identified on the app. The app also identifies where all our elevators are, the ramps to the locations, as well as restrooms.
Yeah, that's all good.
Well, one last thing is for all the restaurants that participate, Chris and I are also providing additional guidance and assistance to them as far as how to improve and be more accessible, and we're tracking that within, behind the scenes, so we can also share with the general public what the restaurants, as well as eventually retailers, are doing to make the city more accessible.
Yeah, of course.
Is that actually launched?
It's launching for this week, upcoming, next Friday. Fall for Greenville, yes.
I can download and use it on.
It's live now.
It's live now. Okay, so, okay, good.
Yeah, just go to the city website, and it's on the city website. Save it as a paper.
Yeah. The other thing is, we've had all the years too, especially for special events with Fall for Greenville coming up, it comes to my mind, we well equipped for that as well. That's why we get a lot of requests for this kind of information.
We're sharing with visit.
All that Saudi, even the Saudi market.
Share with visit Greenville?
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure it's in there.
Is it available on your App Store? Or do you have to go to the city website to get it?
City website.
Okay. Beth, you got anything to add to that? You're standing up.
It's web-based now.
Okay.
Get it on your phone, and then save it to your home screen. And so you can have it, go to the city website, save it to your home screen, and you can use it on your phone.
Yeah. So I'm not going to my, my Apple library for apps now? Can we just make sure that same link is available on the Visit Greenville website? Can we do that? Okay, great. Thank you.
Chris, how accessible is City Hall?
Pretty good. It's, there's about problems on certain levels, but on the most part. The app, one of the reasons why we chose not to have it, we didn't like download it off of an app store, was because we are making changes or refine some of the needs to the official app. We can make those changes immediately and follow that.
Okay.
App that need to be downloaded from the app.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
And it's also going to be available on the Visit Greenville website, and then also on Barbara Stone Foundation website, and on the city website.
Great. Are we the, are we the first municipality in the state? The only municipality in the state to have this? Are we?
Yeah, in the U.S. I mean, I think we've seen that somewhat similar. It was a group in Champaign, Illinois, University did it. They didn't do, go in as much depth as we've taken it, so I think we're really the one, first one that's gone as far as, far as we have.
That's great.
And natural, by the way.
I know, so I was born.
Thank you for that. Very well done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All righty, next is 9A.
Yes, sir. We have an amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, 9A, public hearing.
Yes, so, Mayor, members of council, this is an amendment to our comprehensive plan, the future land use map, and it is a section of Augusta Street. We are changing it from the corridor mixed use to the suburban residential, future land use designation. So this is, as it, this is the new proposal. It would be from East Augusta Place to Riverside Drive would change to suburban residential. So there are two places in the future land use map where we would change it there, and then this map that shows all of the nodes and corridors. So here it is now, and then as it's proposed there.
So Mayor Douglas, the whole, one of the things was that nodes would have connectivity, and first of all, the change has to happen, I understand that, but you can see Augusta Potomac is now kind of an island. It has, it's kind of a connectivity to nowhere. I mean, shouldn't, it's just kind of a formatting thing, but there's no way to reach it from the south end. I know that we're annexing in there, but if you look at all the nodes in here, they're all connected by the yellow corridor method. Now that we've taken that branch out, our node is an island.
Councilmember Dow, understand what you're saying. I think the situation here is it's still, there is still connectivity, it's just that they have different land uses.
If I may add, this was a land use that is shown as residential and will be highly residential for the foreseeable future, and because of the zoning that we implemented, we feel it's important that the land use might coincide with the new zoning ordinance, which is why this amendment is before you. We don't foresee this area being anything other than residential for a very long time, and so we feel like this is something that we want to make sure that our documents align, and that's why this is coming before you.
Certainly gives clarity to the reality on the ground, which it should have had in the first place, but nonetheless, glad it was finally done.
All right, thank you very much for the hearing. So that concludes the public hearing. But it's still a corridor.
That's right. We're not changing the corridor designation, we're just changing the land use designation for the properties along the corridor.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Aye. Mayor White.
New business, 16A.
14A, unfinished business.
I'm sorry, misreading.
No, sir, you're fine. We're on the regular agenda. We'll be going for 14A, which is second and final. This is an ordinance to amend Section 19-4.2 development bonus of the Code of Ordinances by clarifying the development bonus applicability requirements, providing a fee and lieu payment option for the small mixed-use projects, and clarifying rounding requirements.
Okay.
So moved?
Motion and second.
Okay, Mayor and members of council, we're here with the second reading of this ordinance. We have revised it so that it will become effective January 1, 2024, and we're modifying a few things based on feedback from meeting with developers, trying to clarify that the development bonus applies to the base and the bonus height, and then a fee and lieu payment for the small mixed-use projects where rounding error or rounding would result in zero affordable housing. So there's an option to pay there, and then clarifying some rounding, just for the administrator.
Any other questions? We also have an opportunity to, I guess, next time, about the fee and lieu and where the money goes, basically, to present a fund for affordable housing, which is another way we can tilt in that direction. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Okay. 15A now.
And ordinance to amend Chapter 2 Administration and Chapter 40 Taxation of the Code of Ordinances to establish a historic review board and to provide references thereto.
Moved and approved.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
15B.
An ordinance to amend Sections 19-3.2.2 Use Table and 19-3.3.4 Commercial Uses and 19-3.4 Commercial Uses Standards of the Code of Ordinances to clarify and provide location and use standards for body piercing and tattoo facilities.
Okay, motion please. So move. Second. Is there a second? Second. Second, thank you.
I have a question on it. Well, you want to go ahead, or let her go?
All right. Mayor, members of council, we, in our new development code, tattoo and body piercing uses are under the general personal services category, and this ordinance will have a standalone use category for body piercing and tattoos. We are proposing to allow them in the MXS2. That's our mixed-use shop front, that's the Village of West Greenville area, and then also the IX, the industrial flex category, as long as they meet the DHEC requirements that they're not within 300 feet of a parcel that's in our park or our swamp rabbit trail, or if it's abutting a single-family residential district, the RH district, or by a detention center, general group living, such as group homes or a shelter. So we did map out where these would then be allowed in the city, and we have that map on our presentation. It's approximately 175 parcels that would be eligible.
Can you go back?
Go back to the map.
Go back to the map.
Go back to the map. And this is allowed in West Greenville?
West, in the village.
West End?
Not West End, but in West Greenville Commercial District. We recently had one be proposed, so these two areas.
Okay, tell me how, how did the neighborhood respond?
Well, the neighborhood, when we went before with another applicant, there was no issue.
I think you went to the, they had a meeting with the community?
We did. We had the, well, this has gone to the Planning Commission, and they approved, they approved recommending it to city council. But we felt comfortable.
Because it's been a lot of stuff that's been added to West Greenville community, and they'll read this in the paper, not having any input, because a lot of times, they don't get the signs or they don't get the information, you know? For some reason, I have no idea, but I'm a little bit concerned. West Greenville is being dumped on, as far as I'm concerned. I'm, I, I don't know. I don't think that it needs to be included in that particular area, but like I said, if the neighbors, you know, if it's okay with the community, then it's fine with me because they live there, but I just have a problem with this issue right here.
And my understanding is that that project, that did get approval for a special exception for the tattoo facility in the village, is now not going to be a tattooed facility, and it's something different.
And when that one came forward, we did defer it and give it extra time so that we could vet it, and there was no opposition with that earlier one. So this is an area where we've identified it as an ARX district, and the feedback has been positive.
Okay. I would like to defer this until we, until I have more time to talk to the neighborhood, because the only thing that I'm saying is that oftentimes, in neighborhoods that are special emphasis neighborhoods, and there's special emphasis because of the people have fewer representation and other things like that, I don't want them to feel as if we're trying to push something on them, and they hear it, they read it in the paper or hear it on the news, and then it becomes issues, and then the whole staff's got to go and try to figure out what's going on.
That's a motion, yeah.
Second.
We're before this for the time. I just want to say, though, I think that's always a matter of these kind of facilities where years past, people looked to scance at them, and I think it's been very well mainstreamed, and at least with some parameters still in place, of course, but I think you'll find in those neighborhoods that people are okay with it nowadays, and it's a whole different thing. There'll probably be people in this room who've got some tattoos on them, I imagine.
The property north of Rutherford Road?
Yes.
Is that Councilmember DeWorke, and that's your district?
Yeah, that's up on the lonely road. Like, some manufacturing is, and it's right next to the new bus, the bus.
So, so is it right next to the new Washington Heights? So, so is it right next to the new Washington Heights community?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Now, that's counting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but still.
Just saying.
He's a very popular among a lot of people these days.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, could I have the motion to postpone the item to a definite time or indefinitely?
Now, you should try to get some in, out input on that quickly, I think.
Well, let's just say we postpone it to the next meeting, we, if we have time to talk about it, or not, or to sometime in November?
And that will be indefinitely? I, if, if, if it's contingent upon us being able to talk about it, I'd say indefinitely. And in that way, if we get the conversations that need to be had, then we can just reschedule.
Yeah, I don't want to put staff in a bind to be meeting a timetable on that.
That's true. I forgot, y'all got so many things.
So the motion is to postpone the item.
When?
Indefinitely.
Second.
Yes.
Yeah.
Secondly.
Yeah, this leans toward art districts, is what they're, I think is the point of the whole exercise.
Okay. Just a quick question, Mayor Douglas. Did we put time, hours of operation in that as well?
We did not. Most of the feedback that we've received, most of the, uh, tattoo establishments, they do not want to be open late night. Uh, the ones we talked to want to be closed by nine.
Okay.
But if we don't have a timetable on it, it's, the next one could be open till how late?
Midnight.
Midnight.
Takes a long time to.
Takes a long time.
To be clear, there's, there's been no objection, there would be no objection, oh, you have my back, I'll rephrase this. You, no one has articulated an objection to you for us to put a timeframe on it that they would maniturally have to close at that P.M.
No, they, I think they would be fine with that.
Good deal. Thank you.
Okay, more information, I guess. Fifteen C, is that the one, um, we're?
No, yes, since we did take a motion in a second, can we have a voice vote?
Hold on, hold on a second. Yeah, that's sixteen B.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, fifteen C.
Mayor, since we did take a motion in a second on postponing, we can just have a voice vote. And we did take a motion in a second on that.
I just, I just said it was unanimous.
Okay.
To defer. All in favor of deferring, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, fifteen C.
An ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to remove a portion of Augusta Street from the corridor mixed use classification.
First reading of that.
So moved.
Second. Motion to approve. Second. Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Ah, I'm not sure, no. I need to talk to the community, because was this, was this discussed over the night?
Yes.
Okay, uh, with Pleasant Valley?
It went to planning commission on September twenty-first.
Okay, I'm saying the, the Pleasant Valley has had a discussion on this?
Shannon.
It, it would have, it was discussed at length, Councilmember Fleming, throughout the zoning, the zoning change that occurred last spring. So, um, I don't recall if on this specific instance that it was discussed with Pleasant Valley, but it was talked about with the, all of the area when we went through the zoning change.
Okay, I'll keep my note, just like it is.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Gibson.
This was the concern that the map did not, was not consistent with the plan we adopted. A map suggested to someone who's looking at it might say, oh, you could have commercial development all the way down that street, which is not the correct answer, because the zoning doesn't allow it, but the map still suggested that you could have commercial all the way down the street, and we don't want to have commercial all the way down the street, it's residential.
Yeah, the, the map and I was, you know.
This is just correct.
This is correcting what they did to public.
This is correct map that we had to contend with.
Yeah, okay.
And, I mean, I think, I think it'd be very comparable that Pleasant Valley, everybody would think this is a good idea.
Agreed. All right.
Okay, Councilmember, um, Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dowell.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
It's, it's, it's an intent to make it really clear that we don't want to see commercial encroachment further than it needs to be.
Yeah, my, my only concern is, um, a lot of work went into that twenty forty plan, and, and I'm just hesitant about making any type wholesale changes.
This wasn't in the plan itself, this was in the twenty forty plan. Much.
Oh. Whether it be the code or, or otherwise.
Yeah.
A lot of work went into the twenty.
It was, it was an oversight. I think it'd be, you know, clerical error, frankly.
Well, I get with some.
A scrivener, you know, that scrivener.
That's what you, that's what you.
Somebody just blaming somebody else for a scrivener.
Oh, yeah? I'm just saying, we spent all that time, and I spent a long time sitting there looking at the map, and I was like, I was.
Yeah.
Confused, but I will get back to it.
Yeah, I think you'll be satisfied with that.
Know what it is.
Fifteen D. And, uh, Brandon, you gonna come up with this?
An ordinance to amend the parking license agreement, the floor enterprise, Inc., and the city of Greenville for a portion of the parking area located at two oh four Horton Road.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Yeah, but we like this, let's talk about it.
Brandon?
We want the parking business to make some money, so go ahead.
No, well, so what you have, is an ordinance for a license, uh, agreement with floor enterprises. As you know, the city is, uh, developing the property to be the new public safety campus, floor approached the city, uh, they're doing, uh, great work in expanding in their operations, and they're looking for parking space. So they want to lease a portion of the city's property, uh, initially for two years, five hundred and four spaces, twenty dollars a space. Um, the city will ultimately build a police storage facility on the property that they want to lease, and that, once that's constructed, the amount of that leasing will reduce from five hundred and four to three hundred and thirty-five spaces.
It's part of being a, a good neighbor with floor, because they, in turn, were a very good neighbor with us.
And when we purchased, we included that whole.
We did.
Expanse, expecting this to come, and this is, was this about a hundred and twenty thousand a year on income on this, on that lease?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah.
So will that go into our parking fund or into facilities fund for Horton Road?
I think it's facility fund for Horton Road.
As it should.
That, that's better.
Yeah, it'll help with the, with the renovation cost.
Okay. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dowell.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. And fifteen E.
An ordinance to amend four million nine hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars in the capital projects fund, through this public spaces upgrades and safety improvements allocated by the South Carolina State Budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dowell.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Fifteen F.
An ordinance to amend to a development agreement with United Communities Bank, Inc., for the design and construction of public improvements along East Kemperdown Way and Paul Street to the Church Street Bridge and along the Paul Street ramp to Church Street.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No, well, I don't feel right sitting over here. Like, I should be on this side. Thank you all for considering this this evening. This is a realization of the M.O.U. that you all agreed to, uh, two years ago, that helped us land this regional headquarters site, and we had gone through the M.O.U. because at the time, we were still trying to grapple with exactly what was going to be in the public right-of-way, but we knew that it would be somewhere between one point four and two point two million dollars. And so now we're moving forward with, they're ready to move forward with the right-of-way work, so that they can move into the bank, into the new headquarters in spring of twenty twenty-four, which is very exciting. Um, and the work has now been priced out through the engineer at one point seven million, approximately. So that is what we're here before you this evening, is to ask for your approval of the development agreement that was contemplated from the M.O.U. in twenty twenty-one. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, you know, I said this two years ago, and how important this project is to, and this, I know we're talking some, about something a little bit different here, but UCB and how important that is, this project is to Greenville. I think it really sent a message to the southeast and really to the nation that Greenville is ready for corporate headquarters, it is ready, um, for these, these types of businesses, and, and, uh, obviously, it's got the jobs, capital investment, but I think that, I think the signaling to the, to the nation that, you know, Greenville is still here, open for business, and so proud to have UCB choose Greenville as their location.
Okay. Clerk, clerk will call again.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Councilmember Dowell. Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you. Fifteen G.
An ordinance to enter into a development agreement within our Gateway Greenville LLC for the design and construction of public improvements, probably located at two five zero Church Street, as well as along Church Street, North Street, and E. Bodie Place.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Y'all want this again? Have to work?
No, but I do have a question.
Okay, question, just a question.
Um, very, this is a catalyst project, this is so exciting. In the documentation, Shannon.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're looking at a three million dollar contribution, and the city's planning to request a million of that in the form of a grant from Greenville Water System.
Correct.
Two million from economic development, a million from this grant. We seem super confident on that one million.
Yes, we have, we have talked about it with the head of Greenville Water, Mr. Boss, and he is expecting our application.
Okay, okay, good.
Um, okay.
And I believe half of it was money, mostly sitting on the ship.
We have half of it already waiting for us this year, and then it would be an additional year, because we get half a million per year.
Yeah, we're not, um, we're not appropriate that funds, those funds.
That's right. And I have let them know that we will be appropriating that fund every year.
We certainly won't do that again, yeah, that's right. Uh, clerk will call again.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dowell.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Okay, new business, six A, resolution.
Sixteen A, a resolution to approve the naming of certain facilities located within Unity Park.
So moved.
Second. Uh, Tara, you want to, just briefly, or do you have a presentation, or do you?
No.
I'm sorry, I have to spin those out of that. This is well money from. At least, that, that's something I've never done before, to check to the city of Greenville, Michelin, BMW, et cetera, et cetera. Great, great names on, great names on here, all speaks family. So, so you do, you do have a presentation.
It's sort of, yeah, this is a wrap-up for a phase.
These were big decisions, each one one at a time, discussions in meetings and discussions in meetings, and they made a decision, and amazing numbers there, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Yes, ayes have it, thank you.
Sixteen B is being deferred by unanimous consent. Sixteen C, resolution to appoint the municipal judge.
I don't know.
It says by the mayor's. I didn't know, I didn't know, my job.
Presentation?
Got to check on those vacations you've been taking, of foreign, foreign countries and other things that certain justices do. Um, but thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Matt Holic, for your many years of service to the city of Greenville, and we're happy to reappoint you as municipal judge. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, for the record, I have a motion, I do not have a second. I can, thank you.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Of course, ayes have it.
That judge probably looks like he has a presentation ready for it, not, oh, he's approaching the bench.
Oh, my God.
What are you doing? Dowell needs to, oh.
Okay, sure.